The meeting of the Governance Organization Legislation Committee of the Town Council to order on August 21st, 2019 at 10:37 a.m. We do have a quorum and we are being video recorded. So, our first item of business is the discussion of and vote on the proposed proclamation to celebrate the Jewish community of Amherst's 50th anniversary. So, does everyone have that proclamation? Have they read that and all? Our charge is to look at it for clarity, consistency, and actionability. So, that's what we will be discussing. Does anyone have any recommended changes? The only one I have is to fix the date from the 19th of August to the 26th of August, because I think they thought it was coming this past meeting. So, that's the only change I would recommend making. That one would have been made anyway, but we might as well do it now and send off with that change. So, I'm making that to the document and will save it as a different document to forward to Lynn and Athena for... Oh, anything else?
What I was wondering with the proclamation, it was good we looked at it, but the date would have gotten changed anyway. It just seems like proclamations feel different than even a resolution or... And a commemoration feels different as well. So, it feels like in the scale of things, in terms of time, it's not...
We will be discussing that in our next item of business.
Thank you.
Or two items of business away, I believe, right? No, that's fine. You're right on point with what we're trying to figure out with policies. Seeing no one else has any recommended changes, I will personally make the motion. Let me write this down. Motion...
I don't have a consensus.
Well, we need the motion for the council.
Okay.
So, I'm moving to declare the proclamation to celebrate the Jewish community of Amherst's 50th anniversary, clear, consistent, and actionable. Pat seconded it, so...
He didn't second the next one?
No.
So, that's M-H-P-D-A.
P-D. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is a unanimous vote with two absent. I am going to actually take the next item out of order. We have items not anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance because on Monday night we were referred the percent for art working group charge, or whatever we're calling that at this point in time, for discussion, potential changes and all. I'm going to work on, let me find what those comments and all were as I go back to that meeting note. And does everyone have that up for review? So, okay. The one that was posted for the packet has highlights in yellow. Kathy did that at the meeting, so this is the document she sent me. Those highlights were her belief on what the potential problems were. I obviously had a lot of concerns as people heard at the meeting. But I also want to refer us to our draft work group language, since I think this is intended to be a work group. We have language, and so I think we should refer to that language in terms of looking at this document and maybe attempt to have it comply with that. So, our work group language that we agreed upon last meeting says a few things. They're created by the council or council committee to serve the council. They're not committees of the town and not subject to charter provisions governing multiple member bodies. So, and the motion to create a work group must include... So, we had intended it to be a motion, not a charge. I don't know whether we want to sort of turn this idea that we have in front of us document into just a standard motion instead of a formal document. We can certainly do that in anticipation of work groups potentially being approved by the, this language being approved into the rules. That motion must include the composition, the measure or issue that shall be with the work group's focus, the specific task to which the work group is assigned, the deliverables the originating body expects from the work group, and a date by which the work group will produce its deliverables. They don't require a formal committee charge, and the purpose and composition is established by the motion to create them. The presiding officer of the originating body shall appoint all work group members, and the presiding officer or designee of the originating body shall preside over the work group until a chair is elected. They're subject to open meeting law, and it's dissolved by majority vote of the originating body. So, do we want to attempt to modify this essentially into a motion instead of a charge? Or do we want to try to just modify this charge and keep it a charge? I think that's the first thing we need to decide.
So, we would change, we would change that to motion?
So, I think we would actually get rid of this document completely and write a motion that essentially has much of this.
Oh, I see.
You know, instead of it having Town of Amherst's name, all of this, it would be, you know, "I move to create the percent for art bylaw working group as follows." And then, we could list much of what's listed as the second half of this charge, but it would all be part of sort of a motion instead of a formal charge. Yes, Steve?
So, the proposal would be that, because there's nobody here, just us, but the proposal is that we would craft a motion that we think would be presentable.
Yes.
And what I heard Mandy say also is that it could...
Mike.
What I also heard Mandy say is that it could be a generalized motion where we insert, in this instance, percent for bylaw, or so that any charge, any committee that was starting a working group would just take that motion, put in the information and stuff.
Yeah, that would actually be pretty good, yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
We could convert it into sort of a general thing after we create it for this.
Yeah, to keep it as simple and direct as possible, because flexibility and speed are important here.
I support that idea.
Okay. So, what I'm going to do is then make a new document that you guys aren't going to be able to see right now. I'm going to save essentially this charge as a percent for art working group motion per GOL, and I will upload it once I, but I'll type as we're talking. And so, the first thing I'm going to type is a motion to create the percent for art bylaw working group per... Well, we don't really have a rule for it yet, so I don't think we can cite the rule.
No.
Eventually, we would, but right now, we can't. So, motion to create the percent for art bylaw working group, and it's "I move to create the percent for art bylaw working group as follows," I think, and then just a colon, and then we'll just figure it out. So, I think then we just go down, if we're looking at this charge that we were presented, just delete the whole header section and go right to composition. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay. Composition, so there was a discussion at the council meeting about the composition and whether, seeing that, at least for this one, the town council is creating this, or at least it was brought to the council, not particularly just CRC or FinCom, that maybe it should be able to include non-CRC or FinCom members.
Just, uh...
Yes, Steve?
Point of order. So, is it our job to even have an opinion on this?
That was just going to be my question, is this...
Is it our job to even have an opinion on this?
Is that something, this motion to make it consist... So, it was referred to GOL to make consistent with bylaws, rules, and charter. And so, is that the composition of it, something we as a committee should be modifying? It, at this point, I believe, beyond the fact that I'm concerned that one town staff to be designated by a town manager might actually not comply with the charter, beyond that, the other portions of it, I believe, are clear. They're consistent, we don't really have work groups right now. They're actionable, and they fit the definition of how we've defined work groups for the language we're going to send on to the council, which is a work group is defined as a temporary group that includes members of the public and may include counselors who are not members of the originating body to focus on a specific assignment. Pat?
Just a minor question. Here, there are five voting members. Is that every working group would have five members? Yeah, okay, because that, yeah. That again speaks to, we don't know what we will need until we create a group.
Yes. Yeah. Steve?
And the reason we can't name town staff is against the charter is specifically why?
The charter has a provision, and I'm going to pull it up once I find it, that says... I just have to find the section in the charter. It is Section 2.3b that says interference with administration. Neither the town council nor any individual member thereof shall give orders or direction either publicly or privately to any employee of the town not appointed by the town council. So, in theory, I think potentially it might be okay. I think this one's on a line. I don't, I don't know, because we're creating, it's a council committee, though, that's...
It's an advisory group. It's an advisory group. Its only job is to advise the town council, so...
Or the committee.
Or the committee. So, it's not, we're not giving direction to a staff member or to the, the staff members there to give direction to us?
Yeah, I mean, I guess maybe reword it that says the composition is, I mean, essentially, this one, one town staff to be designated by town manager.
It could be...
It could be town manager or designee. I mean, you can't stop the manager from designating someone, yes?
Yeah, when we discussed this at CRC, that was how Dave Zomack proposed. The town manager designee. We could als, we could also say that, so Dave Zomack is on the CRC by his own volunteerism, by, at the direction of the...
At the direction of the town manager.
So, the town manager seems to have the right to appoint liaisons to committees as he sees fit. So, we could say something like that. The town manager may designate a staff member to be a member as he sees fit.
Actually, well, he now, yeah.
Yeah.
As they see fit.
I guess I, I'm not raising him.
No, just talk.
It seems to me that just saying town manager or designee would do it.
Cover.
Yeah.
Shall we do that, then?
Yep.
Okay, so that would be the fourth bullet point would read town manager or designee. So, right now, the motion, composition, five voting members with the same bullet points. The two counselors, one from finance, one from CRC, should we split them out as separate bullet points for clarity?
Yes, and we also need to make sure that, well, it's the CRC finance, we have class members, so we have to be careful.
One counselor who serves on the finance committee. One counselor who serves on the community resources committee. And then, we have chair of Amherst Public Art Commission, former chair of Amherst Public Art Commission, drafter of former bylaw. So, that one's very unspecific. The former chair, there's many, I suspect, former chairs. Immediate past chair, maybe? I think that's how, the person they're referring to?
I think we should just say Bill Kaisan.
Should we just name them?
Yes, I think...
Okay.
Yeah, because that's an unusual situation.
So, Bill Kaisan, K-A-I-Z-A-N, right?
K-A-I.
And Eric Brody, and then town manager or designee. Pat?
I'm just trying to figure out that what town staff would be needed for this, whether it was the town manager or not. I don't see that for this. I could see it if we needed Stephanie Chicarillo about something or... So, it feels like, why?
I would think, if I may, I would think that he would want, well, A, he may himself be involved, but one of his facilities people or somebody that knows about finance or about...
Do you have a finance...
So, we're getting close to discussing the pros and cons of the actual composition instead of whether it's clear.
Yes, we are.
So, we could come up, you know, this is something I think that should be brought up at the council meeting in terms of, is this the right composition? We need to designate who appoints these members, the two counselors, and I believe... Didn't we, the presiding officer of the originating body shall appoint all work group members? So, five, composition is five as follows. Five voting members appointed by the president of the council. Well, if the council's voting this to create it, then the president appoints. If we're trying to follow our work group rules, we do have to declare who's going to appoint these. Yeah, no, I get your concern, because if this was a CRC thing, then CRC would be appointing the CRC member. If this was a finance, then finance...
But it could be a CRC thing, and the CRC chair would appoint all the members.
Would then appoint the finance committee member, though, too. It's not...
Yeah, see, if moved, okay.
Are you okay with that? I know it seems weird.
Like, really, the, the...
I'm sorry, Steve.
No, after you.
No, please.
This is free form. The president only would be appointing the two counselors. She wouldn't be appointing Eric or...
She would technically appoint the other three, but they're named, right? They're already, you know, there's the composition, three of them are by name. She would probably formally appoint them, even though they're named in the charge, though.
So, this is a one-off. You know, so... What I'm struggling with, and I could, is the idea that a work group evolves from a committee. It doesn't involve the council, it involves the committee's work. And so, I have no trouble with the committee chair picking the members for the committee and going. I'm having trouble with this, the council president deciding who the counselors are when we know one comes from finance and one comes from CRC, which is totally appropriate. So, I'm just feeling really uncomfortable with that.
I understand. It's going to get even weirder when we deal with the report back to the originating body when my whole thing was this should not be reporting back to the council. So, I, I mean, is this something that, that should not be a council motion, should be a CRC-created work group that recognizes that FinCom also needs to see the bylaw when it comes back? Steve?
I think, I think the only option is to report to the council, and the council can refer it back to the committees, but I don't think that you can, I don't think that we can have a council work group that explicitly reports, sends its report straight to the committees. I think it has to go to the council for distribution as the council sees fit.
But they're sitting at the committees right now. This bylaw that you're trying to modify is sitting at CRC right now, and CRC has not reported it back out. So, I think it needs to go back to CRC and finance.
Then back to the committees as referred or whatever. Yeah, I think that's right, okay.
So, I don't think it should be, I mean, that's why I don't think it should be reporting to the originating body, which is the council. So, the question becomes, is this something under clarity, consistency, and actionability that consistency-wise, this is our first one, so we don't really have consistency, but is consistency-wise, this something we recommend the council doesn't do that CRC does?
Or a committee does, yeah.
Or finance does, and one of them takes hold of this work group now? And does it, even though it's going to have members of non-CRC members on it, say, if CRC takes a hold of it? Is that something we could recommend under a consistency thing? And the consistency would be the council already referred something to a committee, that's the committee that needs to deal with it now. Thoughts?
I feel like it should stay with the committee.
Then it should be a committee appointment.
Yeah.
A committee motion.
Well, because I'm thinking a lot about the whole point of the work group in any of the council committees is to get something done as quickly as possible. And if we have to then go back to the president, to have the president appoint the people, that, it just feels awkward. That's why I keep asking, is this a one-off? Is this a one-off? And I also feel like if a work group come, it bubbles up in CRC, we decide to have a work group, and we know what we want, we know we're hoping to get what, the kind of information and everything we want to get. Why would we give our appointment, give that away to somebody who's not on the committee? And then, I would say that in this sense as well. You, as chair of CRC, know your, know us well, and Andy as chair of finance knows his folks well, and you can either, you can even choose yourselves, but it just seems to me that you have more information about the point, you know, what we're trying to work on than the president, as informed as she is.
Steve?
Either way, so I think that, you know, just to follow along that thread, I think that at this point, Lynn knows this all pretty, Lynn knows this all pretty well. I think it has more power if it's appointed by the president. I think it's more, has more authority if it's appointed by the president.
Why does it need more authority?
Great question.
It's work of a committee, it's coming from a committee. It's not coming for, the committee is not going to report back to the council, it's going to report back to the committee that sponsored it. If GOL sets up a working group, then that working group reports only to GOL, and then we use that information to work on something that we will bring to the council.
So, can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
No, I, I just want to add to it, when we were discussing the language for work groups, even though we put the council as a body, can be an originating body, we, we struggled with this distinction between ad hoc committees and work groups, and we actually have an agenda item on that today. But when we came up with this language and pushed it forward to the council, last week we adopted, you know, approved some language. I think the discussion there was they would be, work groups would mostly be used in committees, not by the full council, and that if the full council thought something was so big, it would probably be an ad hoc committee, not a work group. And this bylaw, and taking that sort of conversation to where we're at now, there's two committees that have recognized that maybe they need some more work, and they need people working on this a little bit more, because maybe it needs more tweaking than can be done in either committee, or they don't want to work against themselves. So, in taking the discussion we had about work groups and what Pat was saying about flexibility and all, I, maybe this is the time to set sort of that consistency of practice with, we've, the council's already referred it to committees. Now, the committees need to work together to say, who's going to take a hold? This was something when it was referred to three committees at one time, how's that going to work? So, maybe the chair of CRC, which I know you're sitting right here, but, but in the future, if there's two committee referrals, those two chairs get together and say, who's going to have, how are we doing this timing? What's the timing going to look like? And, and this one, because it's more, you know, finance needs to look at it because it's got financial implications, but the policy part, in some senses, is the more complicated issue before finance says, is this something we can do financially? So, when I look at it, I say CRC probably needs to take hold of this, own it. They know finance has some concerns with it. So, CRC creates this work group, talks to the chair of finance and says, who wants to be on this work group? We think someone should be there. Puts that person on, because you don't have to have just CRC counselors on there. You can create the work group, put that person on, put maybe some other counselors that aren't on CRC on it, as Darcy at the meeting on Monday was concerned about. Put these other two on, and then it, it works with our work group wording of reporting back to the originating body, getting it going that way.
Sounds good. But I have another idea here, which is that for the two counselors that are named, the two counselors that are identified, why not just say CRC chair or designee? And for the other ones, say finance chair or designee?
Because we're still running into the appointment problem of the president then appoints you, and then you then designate someone else? I, you know, we're running into that problem. Whereas, if, if we take this out of this committee GOL, because we were charged with coming up with something for next week's meeting, and essentially say, our recommendation is here's our working work group rules, and under that, we discussed it, and we believe CRC should create it, and hey, if we want to do this, here's your motion. If we today want to try and come up with a motion, we, we could and report out, here's the sample motion we came up with that would comply with it. We think this is something for consistency stake in the future that CRC should just move and adopt if they feel like it, that they're probably the control. And that motion would be five members. It doesn't even have to say how many counselors, because the chair, you know, we could...
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And then, the chair can appoint who the chair feels is necessary to be on that. We could say how many counselors, the motion probably... We could say how many counselors, the motion probably should say how many members of the public and how many counselors, because they have to have members of the public. But, but we could do that, and that could be our report out to the council, which is, we suggest this just be a CRC motion.
I agree with what you're saying. What I also feels important to me, CRC, I think, is gonna be calling on work groups a lot. And that means that we may be, I mean, fi- I feel like finance has direct, because we have this overlap of membership. We've already talked about some of the financial implications and stuff. And our job in CRC is to go, to deal with impact. So and this is an instance where we need somebody from finance to talk about what they're seeing as issues. So it's this collaborative nature of what CRC is gonna need from a lot of different committees. I would hate to, oh, I can't think of a good example right now. But I, I feel like we need to be able to collaborate across committee lines all the time to get a full flood of information about the impacts. 'Cause we need it even before finance makes their decision sometimes, I think. What are some of the financial pros and cons? We're not decide, we're, our job is only to present these impacts, potential impacts.
So where do we wanna go from here? Do we wanna continue trying to create a motion?
I think so.
And then we'll figure out how we get that out of this committee and present that to the council?
Yeah, so that can be discussed in a minute, I think. Now, list is that, will this require two hearings? Does this, the first reading, second reading, is this?
So this isn't a bylaw.
Oh, right, of course.
And if our, our recommendation, it sounds like we're moving towards making a recommendation that the council not act, that it just be the CRC act at its next meeting, I think is.
Yeah, and this is.
So today, at our meeting, we could pick our, who we want to be on this. And we could ask somebody from finance, we could talk to Andy.
Does CRC have a meeting today?
'Cause he's on CRC, yeah.
So.
Which is interesting, but.
I mean, if we come up with a draft motion today, we could make that reference back to the council. Does CRC meet next week, too?
No.
No. It, there's nothing stopping CRC from adopting a motion this afternoon. It would look weird, maybe, but maybe not.
Except we don't, if we don't have an official work group policy, therefore, we wouldn't have the enabling.
But you've got the ability to create a subcommittee.
Yeah.
But a subcommittee is just us. Like, we'd go down from five to three or something like that.
I don't know what Robert's rule says about that.
I guess.
Let's wait for this motion, I think. I think we'll be premature, too.
I don't agree, but that's okay.
Yeah.
But I guess I'm, I'm not clear about what the rea- I, I feel like there's resistance that, you, Steve, and that's fine. I'm just trying to understand it more clearly, so there, I'm, I'm not understanding necessarily.
Let, let me try, 'cause I think I got what Steve's saying. I think what Steve's saying is, right now, because the rules don't actually have wording for work groups, the only way to create a working group is to create an ad hoc committee under the charter and under our rules, because that's the thing we can create under the rules. And that would, if it's a subcommittee, which committees can do, subcommittees in general, by definition, only include members of the committee. So CRC doesn't have the authority to create a subcommittee that also includes Bill Kaysen and Eric Brody. But the council, as creating an ad hoc committee, does have that authority. And so.
The council then also has the authority to put forth a motion, and which this would, is becoming.
Which this one would be?
It, it just.
The council may have the authori- you know, so, so, yeah, so maybe, and, and the dual readings would be for us to get work groups adopted to be able to do it. Which would take multiple times for CRC to do it. I think that's what he's saying, is he's not sure his committees right now have the authority to do this outside of a council ad hoc committee or another council action.
I understand. My frustration comes with a lack of speed. And, and resi- and simplicity. It's a, a common frustration in mine that I'm working on letting go of. There are ways to do things more simply, not necessarily in government. So I'm feeling like I am having trouble with thinking that, all right, we brought, we had it at a council meeting, Monday it'll come up. And then we have to have another reading of it before we can, and then we have to, what if the rules and procedure thing doesn't get changed? It just feels like the work of a committee is being stymied. And not intentionally by anybody on the council, not by anybody. But that's what it feels like. And.
We're making it so much easier for our successors.
No comment. So I think we're trying to avoid creating an ad hoc committee. Bec- so, so I think, given Steve's concerns, maybe the right thing to do is to refer this out of our committee with an actual motion. And the motion actually say that the originating, that, that the town council designates CRC as the originating body in the motion. Which would get it out of the town council being the originating body. We can do what we want. We're just creating this by motion, not by, you know, calling it something. It's a measure. We can do what we want with measures. You know, and so it's not, it, while the rules don't totally say, it's still a measure. So you can't refer to a rule, you can't refer to the charter. We could potentially temporarily, I, I, I'm, I have to think through the full mechanism for how, but maybe it needs to be a motion at this point by the council. But that motion includes designating CRC as the originating body. Whereas the sort of authority body or reporting body, or however we wanna do it. Does that sound?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're back to five voting members appointed by, as follows. So I'm gonna add a sentence, the percent for art by law working group shall, the town council designates the community resources committee as the originating body. So is that how we did it? Originating body of the percent for art by law working group? So that's the first sentence I just drafted. Whoops. And then, composition, five voting members appointed by the chair of the community resources committee. Right? One counselor who serves on the finance committee, one counselor who serves on the community resources committee, Bill Kaysen, Eric Brody, and the town manager or designee. And then at the meeting, you can argue for a different composition if you want. That's the way it reads right now. Actually, I'm gonna turn this into paragraphs. So the percent for art by law working group shall have five voting members appointed by the chair of the resources, community resources committee. And then, as follows. And then the bullet points for that. So that's the composition. The measure or issue that shall be the work group's focus. So that is this, this, what was the purpose? I'm gonna write, the focus of the percent for art by law working group shall be to designate, or to develop. Yep.
I don't think that we're developing it. I think we're updating and revising a previous bylaw. That's what we're actually doing.
To update and revise the percent for art by law
Passed.
Passed by
Town.
Town meeting in spring of 2017. In spring 2017. So that's the measure or issue that shall be the work group's focus, the specific task to which the work group is assigned. So that's gonna be number four. And I'll show you guys everything when, when I get it. The percent for art by law working group shall. And then this is revise the previous bylaw to address concerns identified by the Massachusetts Legislature. Clarify definitions. Respond to questions or concerns raised by council committees? I think so? Is that clear? Develop a revised version or propose, I, instead of develop, I think, propose a revised version. A revised version of the bylaw for consideration by the community resources committee and finance committee. She's got review of GOL and legal review by town attorney. So I think I just stopped that sentence after finance committee.
Right. Because then the.
So, so the.
CRC would.
CRC and finance would revise, would redo it. They make their recommendations, once they're recommenda- 'cause they can revise it further. Once the recommendations are made, the, the formal referral to GOL then kicks in and it automatically comes to GOL from there. Yeah. My, my concern was that no committees were listed in this, which is, yeah. So I think we can just stop that sentence after finance committee, which are the two committees that currently
Are being affected.
Are, are involved in this, yeah. And then, okay. So that's the shall, there's the report back. So that's the specific tasks. I think the report doesn't involve a specific task. The next thing in our work groups is the deliverables the originating body expects from the work group. And then a date by which the work group will produce its deliverables. So I think both of those could fall, could be our report section that's listed here and was originally drafted as reports, is the percent for art by law working group shall provide the, a revised and updated bylaw with a report explaining changes from the original percent for art bylaw passed by town meeting to the community resources committee and, and finance committee? And finance committee by, and then that would be the September 23rd date. By September 23rd? That's the next, that's the council meeting. Do we? There was concerns that that might be too quick, 'cause it's four weeks away. And people were talking two months. Steve?
The question is.
Is September 23rd the appropriate deadline?
I think it's too soon. I don't see how we could possibly do it. Expeditions.
October 31?
Yeah.
That's two months, in some sense, that's two months, which was the original appointed timeframe. 'Cause in, in the original charge, that had a two-month ti- length of appointment, and then September 23rd.
So, October?
October 31?
Yeah.
We're gonna get rid of charge adopted, charged revised, and SME status voted. Although we should probably include SME status for Bill and Eric, just for Bill and Eric's purposes. Special municipal employee, uh, do working groups, are they cons- I guess they're multiple-member bodies, so they would need. And then it would need to be separately voted?
Oh, my goodness.
For two months, does it matter for them?
It doesn't matter. I don't think either of them, has to do with whether or not you consult with the council.
Right.
Why don't we?
Yeah.
Why don't we?
Leave it out? Okay.
And then if somebody at the council brings it up.
Yeah. I was just deleting the line and like, do we need to do something with that? Okay, so we've got, the motion to create a work group must include at a minimum composition of the work group. We've got that. Shall have five voting members as follows. And then the measure or issue that shall be the work group's focus, the focus of the work group shall be to update and revise the specific task to which they're assigned. So I have that in here, that's the next one. And then the deliverables the originating body expects from the work group, which is on this one, number five, a revised and updated bylaw with a report explaining changes from the original bylaw to CRC and finance by October 31. And so that fulfills both four and five of our work group draft language.
And then, I'm assuming that CRC alone would vote whether they were recommending the bylaw. Finance would vote independently and those, and the bylaw would be brought to the town council.
After coming to GOL? Yes. I'm just looking at the rest of our work group language. Presiding officer of the originating body shall appoint all work group members. So the fact that we designated CRC means you appoint, um, chair of CRC appoints. The presiding officer or designee of the originating body shall preside over the work group until a chair is elected. So you'll have to preside then.
Even if I'm not the member?
Even if you're not the member. Work groups are subject to open meeting law. Work group is dissolved by majority vote of the originating body. So that would, since we just, if, if work groups are adopted by the time, by October 31st, then, since this motion would designate CRC the originating body of this working group, or actually, it should be work group, not working group, shouldn't it? Then CRC would be able to dissolve it on its own. I'm changing all the working to work. Consistency, right? Do we need any attached reference documents? Probably not. I'm just looking at what else is left on this document.
I think it's all right, yeah.
To delete that? Okay. Okay. Okay, so let's, I'm gonna enlarge this on my computer, so you guys can see it. And you guys can come on over to read this before we make a motion to forward this on. Okay? Okay?
I think it's casing with a E, just between the Z and the
Oh, it's a Z.
Oh, you can see it on your
No, she shouldn't be able to, because this is just on mine. Oh, yeah, I think you're right with the Z E.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It looks perfect.
Do you wanna see it, Pam?
I'm sorry?
Do you wanna see it? So now Okay, so, everyone in the room has seen what I just typed up based on what we were talking about, on a motion to create the percent for art by law work group. So, this then, go back to my notes. So we created a new motion. Now, what is what we're, we're going to recommend the council adopt the motion? Is that right? Think, given where we stand with rules of procedure and all, I think that's just the right thing. So, that means I will move to recommend that the council adopt the motion to create the percent for art by law work group. And I further move that GOL declares the motion to create the percent for art by law.
I'm sorry, the
I, I got it typed out here, I'll read it again. Work group, the motion to create the percent for art work group, clear, consistent, and actionable, including inconformance with proposed work group rules of procedure. So I'm gonna read that again. So, my motion is to recommend that the council adopt the motion to create the percent for art by law work group. I further move that the GOL declares the motion to create the percent for art by law work group, clear, consistent, and actionable, including inconformance with proposed work group rules of procedure. Does that sound? Okay? So that's me. Who's gonna second? Steve was gonna get the second, right? Any discussion? All those in favor? We are unanimous with two absent. Okay, so that's the referral of the percent for art working group. So that brings us to a, number three on our agenda. And this one is discussion of revisions to rules of procedure, Rule 10.4, ad hoc committees in light of recommendations regarding language for Rule 10.5 work groups. So the reason this is on there is because Evan thought we should probably clarify the ad hoc committees language because of the new work group language. The ad hoc committee language is in our packet as a separate a separate document of, actually, I think, what did I do with, how did I put it up there? Not Rule 8, so have to figure out how I put it up here. I might not have put it up here, because I was waiting to see what we did. Because I didn't have changes. So, there were no changes in what was adopted on Monday night to the ad hoc committee language. That, the full set of changes we just put forward didn't have anything to the ad hoc committees. So, right now, we've got, I'll just read what ad hoc committees are. The council may establish ad hoc committees for the purpose of considering a particular policy or for other purposes. Such committees may make recommendations and sponsor bylaws, resolutions, or other measures. Council charges to establish ad hoc committees shall specify the purpose and membership. A, ad hoc committees shall not exist beyond the current term of the council. B, the president shall appoint all ad hoc committee members. That's it for ad hoc committees. I think what Evan wanted, and we can either decide to postpone this till Evan is here, because he's not here, or go forward. I think what he was thinking was, our working group rules that we just went through were tempting to differentiate between an ad hoc committee and a working group. And so I think what he was desiring was some sort of language in the ad hoc committee rule that essentially says, ad hoc committees shall only include counselors. Because I think that was the one thing we determined was the difference. So we can either work on that now, or we can postpone that for another two weeks till Evan is here, which would then postpone the ability for us to bring work groups back to the council. And I'm not sure we want to wait longer on that.
I don't see why we can't. Go ahead. I mean, what he's saying is clear and
So, the language we used in work groups was a work group is defined as a temporary group that includes members of the public and may include counselors who are not members of the originating body to focus on a specific assignment. So we could take that and say, something like, into this ad hoc council committees. A council for the purpose. We could add a, add a section, instead of, we have an A and a B. We could either put a C in, or we could council, in this, council charges to establish ad hoc committees shall specify purpose and membership. I actually wonder if that should be A. If we should just move that down to an A. So I'm gonna move that one down to an A. B is ad hoc committees shall not exist beyond the current term of the council then. C is the president shall appoint all ad hoc committees. I think between the exit, the specify purpose and membership and exist is where we would put this definition, or, you know, or, or ad hoc committees. So I'm, whoops, it's gonna have to be a B. So, ad hoc committees include current counselors only? Do not include members of the public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do not include members of the public. Do we want something beyond just that wording? Ad hoc committees do not include members of the public. We good with that? Okay. So that, and then, we've got now an A, a B, a C, and a D.
What's the document you're working on?
I was working on my own. No, I, I had just created a document that just had that rule in it. I will go back to, there is I don't think I have it in here. I will go back and upload it to the same document that I've the new rules that we adopted on Monday. I have now inserted our work group language into, with track changes. I will put this language into that document. I can do that now, so people can see it, so we can then potentially vote to just forward that whole thing onto the council. If, if we're willing, let me get this in the document it's in now. Saved there, and let me pull that document up in my computer. And then you guys can view that one. It'll need a table of contents update too, but seven work groups are in 10. Way down in 10, so so what did we just do? So this is now an A. So, we now have, and I will show it to you now. So, you guys can take a walk over again. There is a document called Rules of Procedure Adopted 2019-05-20, Revised 2019-08-19, Proposed GOL Revisions, Work Groups. And it now has, in 10.4, the ad hoc council committee language we have to still vote on. Which has an A, B, C, and D, with B is the main addition, which is ad hoc committees do not include members of the public. And then the work group language that I already pretty much read today, that we adopted last week, or two weeks ago, in on 10.5, and just fully inserted there. Because there was no language there, so it's just a full, here's the proposal. And those are the two changes to it. To the rules as adopted on Monday. Which is why I didn't upload that, because it's just a new document. So, I think we're looking at, actually, no, we're just looking at one motion, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, because we already did the work group motion. Let me look at what that work group That one's not up yet, because it's on just my computer. I will, I will get them all up at a later point. But Yeah, no, that one's not up. No, it's not that, it's just they're not, they're not on the cloud. So, this is, so I'm looking for a motion. This is ad hoc committees. A motion to what was our motion last week? Recommend? What was it? Motion to recommend is what it is. So it's a motion to recommend the changes made the revisions made at the August 21, 2019, GOL meeting regarding meeting two, Rule 10.1 What rule is this one? 10.4. Add hot committees. So, I think the motion is sufficient if it just reads, I move to recommend the revisions made at the August 21, 2019 GOL meeting to Rule 10.4, ad hoc committees. I'll make the motion.
821 GOL to Rule Number 10.4.
Ad hoc committees. Yep. Who's gonna second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That is a three zero vote. With two absent. I believe that allows us to, oh, let me do one other thing. Alyssa recommended that we clarify clerk, town clerk versus clerk of the council everywhere in the rules. I haven't gone through and done that yet. When I forward these two on, can I go through and do that? So okay, so by consensus, MJH can revise the clerk references as appropriate
MJH.
As appropriate prior to forwarding to the council.
Town clerk as appropriate.
And then I'll forward the whole document again with a report on those two sets of things. We'll see which, I'm not sure it'll be up on the 26th, next week's meeting, but I'll know later today. But, I'll work on getting them on an agenda. So that's ad hoc committees. That brings us to, at time, we've got 45 minutes. I am going to push forward and skip numbers four and five. I was gonna skip five anyway, because George was taking the lead on that, and he's not here. Four is resolutions, proclamations, and commemorations. For now, we're gonna skip that. There are three of the four documents up in our packet. But, I think I'd rather have a full four-person discussion, and it's not as time-sensitive as number six is. And number six is the candidate statements. And so we got a town council opinion. So, six on the agenda is a follow-up on referral from the town council to advise on a policy to compile with Charter Section 7.6, publication of candidate statements. We had, a little over a month ago, more than a month ago, sent a request off to the town attorney to see if it was even legal under campaign finance regulations and our charter and state law and all to publish candidate statements anywhere, including a website. Or, if not a website, on an actual physical bulletin board. And we got an opinion back today on that matter. And, given that candidates are going to turn in papers mid-September, I think this one's a little more time-sensitive than the others. So we should look at this one to decide what we want to do and how we want to move forward. I, I will summarize my understanding of this legal memo, which is, is part of the packet. And can be found both in SharePoint and as part of the packet on the website. Basically, my understanding is, yes, it's legal for us to create a policy. That policy can be something that allows for publication on a website, but that town staff is not allowed to write the statements. That that and they can't be mailed to voters. That it can be published on a bulletin board. If we adopt one, it would be consistent with the law. If we adopt a policy, that they cannot be mailed to voters. Municipal resources are not to be used to develop the candidate statements. So, instead, the policy adopted should make clear, and I'm reading directly from the opinion, instead, the policy adopted by the council should make clear that candidates are required to develop their own content. To that end, the webpage where such statements are posted should also include a disclaimer indicating that the statements are provided by the candidates and do not reflect the position of the town in whole or in part. So that puts the burden back to us to come up with a draft policy for the council to consider, I think. If we town attorney said we can do it, so I think it's up to us to talk about what that policy might look like, and then draft one. Thoughts? Thoughts?
And that's the simplest way that we can say candidates may post individual statements on the town bulletin boards and websites. But, you know, the last statement about, these are the words of the candidate, not the county.
Do you want me to test something? So, so I, I'm happy to come up with language. I, I think what we should talk about is the parameters of it. Because I think what the town attorney wrote is clear. The policy, we can adopt a policy. And the policy requires candidates to develop their own content. So, so I think the policy would start with, in accordance with the charter, candidates may, candidate statements will be published on the town bulletin board. Here is the parameters. And then, you know, something like that, I can come up with that language. But, but I think we need to come up with, what would they look like? So things I'm thinking about is what is the length? Do, do we want unlimited statements? Or do we want to limit candidates to a specific number of words or a specific number of sentences or a specific number of characters? You know, do we want to allow candidates to request a hyperlink to a website? Some sort of website or Facebook page or something? Or do we not want any hyperlinks associated? If so, how many are they allowed to have? What would that look like from the town website point of view? And obviously, including whatever policy we draft, this disclaimer and all. Is there a deadline? You know, I think the policy should have, potentially should have something about when that statement will go up. Who gets on that statement? Although I think the charter might already clarify that. The charter language is, the town council shall establish a process compliant with state campaign and political finance laws for candidates whose names, seven point six, whose names will appear on the election ballot to publish statements regarding their candidacy on the town bulletin board. So I think the charter already limits who gets it. So write-in candidates don't get a statement per the charter, but people who have qualified do. According to the charter. But I think those are the things, if we can discuss some of these parameters, I can come back at the next meeting with a draft policy.
I keep bouncing back.
Keep bouncing back to.
On media, yep.
Sitting here, I haven't written a paper in so long. I haven't, I'm trying to be a reasonable word limit.
So the, let me just give you an idea. The JCA proclamation that we just passed today is three hundred and thirty-two words. It just happens to pop up on Word when I have it open on Word.
So this is bringing back the trauma of the campaign last year. But I recall the Gazette, the Mass Live, Mothers Out Front, a bunch of organizations asked us to, the housing group asked us to give statements. And I think we could, the Gazette seemed to be particularly brief. So I think we could borrow from, from something like that.
What I'm thinking about is each one of those had a very specific topic or topics that we were looking at. And we were, so it seems more to me, and I could be wrong, that a candidate's statement on the town website would sort of be an introductory, here's who I am, these are the values I have, this is what I would be working on directly. Or, which feels a little different than, still need a limit, but.
Did the League of Women Voters ask us, they asked us for some, they did something also.
They did, and I think there were limits to, I think everything had a limit.
Actually, the League of Women Voters is probably the most general of them.
I would, I would use something like that as a model. The other thing is that maybe I'm getting way down into the weeds already, but it'll drive the managers of the website insane if you submit a statement on Tuesday, then on Wednesday you want to amend it, and on Thursday you want to add something. So I think once submitted, it's, it's done.
So we're submitted by this date.
Yeah, and it'll be copied exactly as you submitted, and that's how it goes.
Once submitted, done, no revisions permitted. No revisions permitted. Submit by a certain date. Do we, that date to me, so there's. But I, I think, I think we should have a date and a time, like close of business on so many days, you know, either this particular day or so many days after. And I was thinking maybe more, you know, different candidates, candidates can submit their signatures the day after papers were available in July or all the way up till mid-September. I think it's most fair if no statements go up until after all candidates are certified. It seems to be the fairest to me. And so that, to me, leads to a deadline of maybe a certain number of days after candidate signatures are certified by the Board of Registars. And we can pick that number of days, but something like that, whatever that deadline is, and refer to it as that general deadline since that date would change every year.
So the critical thing is when you get the signatures in, and then the registrar has, I don't remember how many days to certify? Ten days? But once you submit your papers, then we could say, what I would say is two weeks after, I'd say the end of September would be a reason on the deadline, because we don't need to wait for the certification.
But it's only candidates whose names will appear on the ballot? Oh, so they don't, they could submit before, but once it's certified, only candidates. If it's not certified, it is ready to go. So could we, do we want to provide, if we're only going to have November, we can't just do a date certain, because if we end up with a special election, it needs to relate to that. So maybe ten business days after. Yeah, the submitting of the paper submission deadline, I can come up with the wording. Five days?
You'd have to hand your papers to the town.
No, but, but we don't want it per person, we want it one deadline for everyone.
I know, but what I'm thinking is that you hand your papers to the town clerk, the town clerk gives you the, your opportunity to post something on the town.
That they have a piece of paper?
Have people already submitted?
Some I think have, I don't know. No, but, but we need a deadline for submission. Which I would say is either five or ten days after the filing, the filing deadline. Do we like five or do we like ten? Five, five.
I'm trying to think if I had any idea what I was talking about at the time I filed my papers.
So we should also have a publishing deadline of when the statements will go on the website. So to give, I'm thinking to give the town clerk guidance on this matter.
So the, the actual statements by the candidates can have to be in by five days of this.
Five days after the filing deadline.
After the filing deadline. But then the court has ten days to certify them. And we're saying we're going to hold everybody's statement until they're certified.
Yeah.
So.
So.
So it seems to me if the statements are already there, that it wouldn't necessarily take a staff person for a long time to get them on the website. And I'm right about that, so, so it seems like within. We have absolutely no idea how many candidates are.
So the clerk will publish on the website, do we want to go no later than ten days or fifteen days after the filing deadline? That would give them ten days from when all the candidates had to submit.
So if the election is in November, when would things be going?
Early October at this one. If, if we did fifteen days, I think it would be early October.
And then there are other things. People start to pay attention around that. Before then, yeah. But this, Canton shouldn't be their only. No.
So candidates submit by five days after, once submitted, no revisions. Do we want to say they will submit them by email only, because that makes the cut and paste easier? Submit email only.
Well, is email or box or, you know, blah, blah, blah. I mean, is there a better, Google Drive? Email, it's just to email.
I was thinking email only, and then we can ask the town to create a specific email address for that. Or just the town, to the town clerks, to town clerk at, maybe. To town clerk.
I did, well, no, if it's just text, email is fine. And then we have the.
Ooh, just text. That's a, that's a good thing to consider. Are we going to allow pictures or?
We have to have a picture, because that's something that people in the public might have.
I don't know, we should talk about that.
But we post with statements.
Statements is all the charter, charter requires. That I, we could potentially try, my, my thinking is whatever policy we come up with goes through town attorney. We send the wording off to her for.
Basically, it would be a picture of each candidate, maybe. Well, the League of Women Voters doesn't have pictures, they just have text.
So length.
Maybe that's good.
Do we have a desired length yet?
A desired what?
Length.
Fifty words, I don't know.
Well, I, I was looking at JCA's was three hundred and thirty, that's almost a page of text.
That's a proclamation.
Right, no, but, but that gives us an idea of how much writing three hundred and some words is.
Ah, I think it's too much.
Oh, but I remember trying to fit things into small, I'd rather almost err on the side of longer.
I was going to say five hundred, but.
Yeah, I, I was thinking five hundred, but then I'm like, that's really long.
I know, so it, it's like, we're trying to give candidates a time to, and remember, this is going to happen to us too, to really make a statement about who they are, why they're running, what's important. Why they should be voted. I probably, yeah. Hundred words. I, I think it should be short. Why?
Why?
Say more, please. Don't be so shy. I would use my, one of my hundred words as my website, you know, for more information, see this. And actually, I might use all my words as that.
So there's a possibility that the only place people will go will be this website. I mean, as a candidate, you can use it however you want, but we have to, you know, if someone's looking for voter information in general, at least in my past experience, the first place I've always gone is the town's voting, voter education website. And so. Because I want to see the ballot and who's, it's how you get, who's running, it's, you get the full list and all of that. So that's where I sort of start. Other people start in other places, obviously. But I could see someone only looking here. But that's, that's up to the candidate. But I think the goal, you know, my experience on the Charter Commission was to try and give all candidates, no matter their resource availability, an equal footing somewhere to get their name and some of the stuff out. And that was why we put this in here, was that attempt, which is I think why I are on the longer side of enough to be able to introduce who you are and, yeah, the why you're running, what you might do.
The League of Women Voters, I found their survey, so they had five questions. But the total number of words for all five questions is two hundred. So half a page. No, I hope.
Two hundred. That is not a lot.
So what was the individual question, five questions would be forty?
Forty words each.
How do we develop a diverse pool of qualified candidates? How would we prioritize capital projects? What are more initiatives you support regarding affordable housing? That's three. How do you address the effects of declining school age population? And then how do we become a leader in climate change?
Those very specifically say what the issues are. That the league once addressed. And it seems to me that a candidate's statement should be up to the candidate, what they address and how they address it, yeah.
Should be totally open-ended.
Yeah, and open, I mean, there, there is a benefit of having a tight limit, because it makes you really refine what you're saying, but.
If you make it too big, like five hundred words, what's going to happen is you're going to have people that use all five hundred words, and others that have forty. So there'll be a very obvious difference.
Right. And it's not clear which one I'd vote for.
Right. But, but I think, I, I, I'm, I'm, I think five hundred might be too many, that's like a full page. But two fifty, three hundred, somewhere in there, I think seems.
And you can buy extra words from your other candidates if they're not.
We need a number. We need a number. Shall we just go with three hundred?
Yeah, three hundred seems like a lot.
We'll, we'll start with three hundred, this is, this is, this is to give me a way to draft.
And I'm just thinking of my experience doing this, I had a really hard time with all of these candidate statement things.
Right, the longer, though, means you don't have to spend so much time trying to figure out how to cut one word here to make it fit under your word limits, which is annoying too. So right now, the parameters that I'm going to be working on a draft under are three hundred words. That there's no revisions once submitted. So you get one email in, essentially. The candidates submit by a certain date, which is five, at, at this point, the draft will say five days after the filing deadline, whatever language. But that's what will be, clerk will be fifteen days. I'm going to look at our definition of days in places, because the charter defines it. And that might actually put those two closer together than we think.
Because it should be business days.
So five is going to be business days, fifteen, I think, is going to be non, is going to be everything. So in theory, that might just put it about a week after the five. I just have to make sure the definitions, make sure that that fifteen falls after all signature certifications are required, because we don't want it up before that. Email, the clerk will publish, yep, email only, and right now, the address we're going to give is townclerk@amherstma.gov. Is how you submit, include that the website will have the disclaimer on it. And the other thing I was thinking of is that we need to, in this policy, state that the town clerk will delete all excess words. So if someone has submitted a statement that is three hundred and fifty, they delete from three oh one forward. Three oh one to three fifty. They don't, they, it's not like they're just, or they, they don't go back to the candidate to say, oh, you, you wrote three hundred and fifty, you got to cut it down. Nope, they stop at three hundred and everything else is gone.
Or the other day, you just rejected it.
No, because that, that, that's, that's.
So the best thing would be an online form like the League of Women Voters.
That doesn't accept more than a certain words.
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
We'd have to see if, we'll, we'll look at that. Is an online form that doesn't accept.
There's Bill Gillen, harder. Bill Gillen's out there.
Yeah, so we'll look at whether an online firm that doesn't accept a certain number of words is something that IT could do. Because maybe that's the, instead of submit by email. I'll put online form, is there anything, hyperlink?
To your website?
So one hyperlink allowed?
But does that take up word space? Yeah, I can't say one word.
It would be one, or, you know, the candidate's statement, so, so here's what we have to come up with, what's this going to look like? Is it going to be name and then candidate's statement? And then the name could include the hyperlink.
Oh, that's true, just click on the name.
Just click on the name, so.
So some of them allow two, some of the questionnaires allow two hyperlinks. So one to your website, if you have one, the other one to your social media site, if you have one. one.
I think we should do one, and people have to decide which one.
Yeah, yeah.
Just have to go down to Tom Clerk's office to see. Yeah.
Some people play that very closely.
So one hyperlink, right now, three hundred words is what I'm gonna present on the new draft, all of those. Can we think of anything else? Do we wanna set forth, like, no photos, no text only? Candidate's statement would be text only?
Yeah, text only, the League of Women Voters have email. That won't be published, though. They have address that won't be published.
Yeah, this will just be a statement with a name that allows you to hyperlink to one.
They also asked years of residence.
One webpage.
Occupation and residency. I didn't like either of those.
I think it's just name and then their statement.
Yeah, that's all we promised.
And that complies with the charter. So I'll come up with a draft policy. So, let me go find. Candidates' signatures papers are due mid-September. I don't know whether it's the seventeenth, the sixteenth, or the thirteenth, or something like that, it's somewhere in there. We have one GOL meeting prior to then, but it is after the council meeting that the September, we have a GOL meeting scheduled for September eleventh. September ninth is sort of the next, we have the meeting on the twenty-sixth, and then the September ninth council meeting. And then we don't have a council meeting until the seventeenth, which is a joint meeting, but our next non-joint meeting with the school committee is the twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Of September. The seventeenth is the one joint with the school committee on a Tuesday night. So the question is, if we do not schedule another GOL meeting earlier than the ninth, we can't get this policy to the council until the twenty-third, and under our council rules, it would be heard on the twenty-third, but generally not voted on until October. So I was thinking we might want to schedule a meeting on September fourth, solely for this policy. I have, our next one's the eleventh, not the fourth.
Then I also have the fourth.
We, I, I put them to try and comply with the council meetings.
Ah, right.
So we're normally one and three with the council, but the council meeting's two because of things, so.
The fourth is fine with me, particularly since I already wrote it, but there's a citizen naturalization event at twelve o'clock.
Yes, so, and I'm go, I plan on going to that. So that's why I say if we do the fourth, it would only be for this policy, so that we would be out by noon. It would start at ten thirty, and we should be able to be done in time to go to that, because I don't see this taking another full hour.
So I'm gonna say ten thirty, go eleven thirty-five. I wonder why I have it in, and I have the eleven there, too.
So that, does that sound, we'll schedule a separate meeting just for this, so that we can try and get this on the September ninth council meeting. So I will let everyone know, I will get this room reserved, ten thirty. I'll come in with a draft policy that goes with this. If we want this heard at the September ninth council meeting, the next thing I'm curious about from the two of you is, should I, when I draft this policy, send it on to town attorney to try and get town attorney review, knowing that some of these things may change, like the number of words, or form versus email? To try and get started on that review, so hopefully it would be back in time? Or, or should I just talk to Paul and Lynn about what timing they would like for that?
Well, it seems to me, the county lawyer doesn't, it doesn't have to have the number of words, or what kind of, that's minor, that has nothing to do, but it does need to have all the other material checked, and maybe a lot kind of slow, and, you know, I'm sure they're busy, but, so I'd rather get it in sooner, and, 'cause that's where it's gonna go. I mean, that's.
My thought was, the sooner we can get it to them, I, you know, we'll be making changes, I suspect, on the fourth, but they wouldn't necessarily affect illegality. And then we might be able to have that response back, maybe by the fourth, but at least by the twenty-third, when the vote at the council would happen, if we hear it on the ninth and the twenty-third. Does that sound like a plan? So when I get this draft done this week, I will send it to Paul and Lynn for a request to send it on, clearly labeled, "Draft."
Steve, are you gonna be able to make the fourth?
Are you gonna make the fourth, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
First day of class, scanning, scanning, scanning. I teach at one, yeah, I can make.
Okay, yeah, we'll be done before then.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's a Wednesday morning.
Wednesday, yeah, I can make.
We could make it, I can make it, though.
Yeah, we could potentially make, I don't know what Evan and George's teaching schedules are.
That's right, we're all, we are a committee of teachers.
Or a quorum of teachers.
Well, a quorum of teachers, I should say.
Let's, let's keep it at ten thirty. I will email both of them to at least let them know. And if they have problems with it, I'll see if earlier might be, we'll try and work something out, but we're definitely gonna try and get a meeting that week, if I have to do a Google, you know, some sort of doodle poll for a different time, figure something out, but the goal's to get this to the ninth. Okay, so I will draft that, we don't have to vote on anything, I don't think, on that. That leaves us with public comment, there's no public. Adoption of the August seventh minutes, they got uploaded today. Have you had a chance to read them?
I've read them, but I've worked on them.
Yeah.
I would vote for their approval, but I wasn't here to be able to.
Oh, wait, you can wait.
Do we wanna wait?
Or wait, you can, I can.
Who, were you the only one absent on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were here.
No.
These are the ones I can.
Yeah. Pat was the one that wasn't here. You're accurate on that.
I had to keep spelling your name as the person that's not here, okay.
Yes, you're accurate on that. Yeah, so I think, I, I went through them, there was an extra comma in the very first thing about when you deleted Pat's name from present to absent, the comma didn't go with it, but, you know.
Present is your absent body.
I'll move to approve, just to get, keep it going.
Yeah, okay, I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is three zero to approve the August seven minutes.
What happens if, you can, can you move, if you're gonna abstain from a vote, can you make a motion to put it on the table?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think anyone can. I mean, you can make the motion and then vote against the motion.
Yep.
You can make a motion and leave the room empty.
You can do anything you want once the motion's made. Okay, so, given that it is twelve fifteen, we could go back to discussion on policies for resolutions, proclamations, commemorations, but I don't think it's worth it. There's just no time necessary for it. Yes, Pat?
I wanna say that I thought the work done on work groups was good, so I'm glad it happened.
Excellent, so I have a bunch of work to do to get stuff to the meeting on Monday. So I'll, I will be drafting a report, and a couple of reports, I think. I think that's it. Anyone have any comments, any concerns?
As always.
Then we are adjourned at twelve sixteen.
And we're reading at two thirty, right?
Yeah.